Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting for Tuesday, May 10th. Another great day to be at Bruin. We have a full and great agenda tonight. Very excited. We're going to hear from some great people in our community. And I think Dr. McGowan will start with Shin Shinim, our Israeli emissary friends. I'm going to try this, Alon and Abishag, just doing an update on their volunteering activities.
Yeah, well, you said it all. So Alon, if you want to step right up to the podium and welcome, I'll let Alon tell you all about the Shin Shinim program, but I will just say this is something that through the Federation has been remarkably positive for us. So much appreciated, along with the Education Bridge programs, the connection between students and our staff members. It's just another huge benefit for our kids and our faculty in our community. So thank you for that. But take it away.
Thank you, thank all of you for letting us be in the schools all year and having so much fun with the kids. And we just, I just came today from TCMS. We had a great time. We learned about Jewish communities in Spanish-speaking countries. So it was a great activity. I will tell you a little bit about our program and what am I doing here. So I'm 18. I'm doing a Euro Service after high school. I just finished, graduated high school last year in Israel. I came here to Rochester where there's about 140 of us worldwide, not just in Rochester. And I'm through the Jewish Federation and the Jewish Agency. We work in different institutions all throughout the community. I personally work in the high school here and the middle school, but open for any programs or maybe next year. And so our goals of the program is to educate people about Israel, Israel culture, expose, strengthen partnerships. So actually Rochester and a city called Modine, which is the city I'm from, has a partnership, which means they're sister cities. So we're doing programs involve this connection and we talk about it. We do cross-cultural connections. So what I'm trying to do here is not just show Israel. It's more that shows that every student, no matter what his background is, he's welcoming, to show it. And I do feel that students at the beginning of the year, they were just taught and no matter where they're from now, their culture and their background, they feel much more comfortable because most of my classes about how their identity should be shown and no matter where they're from, which language do they know, they should be proud of it and should go ahead and talk it and show it. So this is some of the activities we did so far. I think we did so many classes and so many, so it's hard to remember. We did chocolate bowl, which is Israeli dessert. We did a lecture here for all the sixth graders at TCMS about Israel. We did today, this is from today, we did targeted lectures. We did the high school about politics and freedom of speech. We're doing next week about, about how to take responsibility. We're doing a lot of, a lot of, a lot of different subjects from art to math to everything that just to bring to the students another enrichment and another something they want to get somewhere else. And yeah. And so, yeah. And so to get here, I went through a process with more than 5,000 teens my age, which the process us and I was lucky enough to be accepted.
Be selected. It's very selective.
And yeah, and I'm really happy to be here. The year is about to end, but we still have time to do more great stuff. And next year you will get more Shin Shinim. So and yeah, it was super, super fun to be here and the connection we made with the students is really, yeah, it's amazing. Thank you.
Also, I thank you. Alon, great presentation and thank you for all that you bring to our kids. And Michael Spivak from the Federation is our colleague who is running the partners. Also thank you, Michael, for your partnership. This has been so beneficial. And how many years now?
So this is our third year of the program. I can't believe we're going into a fourth year. And this is with the pandemic going on. So it's, it's pretty gratifying.
You've certainly navigated quite a challenge over the last couple of years for sure to continue to have it happen. So.
Well, we're just so grateful to Brighton Central School District for inviting us into your schools. And we're looking forward to growing this into, you know, the future. It's a great program.
Great.
So I'll put you on the spot, Alon. A favorite thing about Brighton or Rochester?
Right now, I went to Highland Park. It's beautiful, the trees.
Good answer.
I would say the truth, I'm not a fan of the snow. Nothing. But now that it's getting warmer, it's really pretty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're just going to go to more good news and do the Brighton Believer Awards. Dr. McGowan.
Well, thank you very much. I just would like to again, because the audience is new and the jokes are great, give you the introduction again to what we're doing here. Last year, the Brighton Believes Council selected 30 nominees to receive the Brighton Believers Award. And we didn't forget about these members of our community who have contributed so much to our school community and want to make sure, wanted to make sure that they are recognized, especially in this public forum, for demonstrating the Brighton Believes' character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. These award winners are parents, students, teachers, staff members, coaches, and community members. First up, and when I call your name, if you could come up along with if the person is here, the person that nominated them as well, and I'll hopefully have both of their names. First up is Lisa Leverett, who was nominated by Sarah Henderson. So if Lisa and Sarah could come up. No problem. Lisa, great to see you. Lisa Leverett, a French Row Elementary School Special Education teacher, was nominated by social work intern Sarah Henderson. She wrote, "Lisa is an educator whose main goal is to help students be successful in school." Lisa demonstrates the character that a Brighton believer would encompass. She is patient, compassionate, respectful, shows integrity, and demonstrates self-control. Lisa strives to help her students with not only academics, but other aspects of life that may impact their academic success. She does this through active listening, problem solving, individualizing her approach with different students, and showing students she is not willing to give up on them. Lisa, thank you for being a Brighton believer and congratulations. So I'm not sure if we have enough room, but maybe we'll try. Please come on up, the crossing guards in attendance, Mary Behr, Christine Casbar, Robert Cohen, and Edward McGee. And I would appreciate if our town representatives could come up also. Captain Deschain, Chief Catholique, Superintendent O'Malley. The Brighton School Crossing Guards, Mary, Christine, Robert, and Edward here tonight. But not in attendance, Tom Lyons, Barb Lyons, Jennifer Cologne, Joanna Gregory, and Sharon Hurlberg were all nominated for this award. Trista Nilson, Trista, are you here? Great. I mean, not great that Trista's here, but I couldn't see her on. I'm a little bit challenged in that way. Superintendent O'Malley would have seen right over the crowd to tell exactly who was here. Trista wrote, "I have frequently heard them describe their responsibility as a joy. Their enthusiasm for their job, even on dark snowy mornings, comes less out of a desire to stand in the cold and more out of a desire to greet their kids each day. They invest time and effort into their morning conversations with the children, bringing jokes or riddles and learning each child's name. Because they take their responsibilities seriously, they are able to provide a sense of security and confidence to their students. One student likes that the crossing guards remember his siblings who have graduated. Tell them I said hi," he says. "These small moments of kindness build on each other day after day to create a connection that lasts far beyond graduation. I can think of nothing more important than keeping the centers of our universe safe each day. I've experienced it myself. And I cannot tell you how much we appreciate it. So for my dad as well, thank you for all that you've done." Congratulations, Christine.
Robert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Edward?
Thank you, Dr. McGowan, and thank you, everybody that made this award possible. All you have to do is spend a little time out in the 12 Corners or at one of the other intersections to see what remarkable work they do and the interactions, the connections they make with students. It's about their safety, but it's about so much more. I'm so grateful to every one of you. We miss you every summer, but we come back in September and our kids, our families, and our teachers, because it's not just the kids that are being crossed. It's all of the staff here. It's a, it's a tough intersection. And you're magicians at doing it. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much, Bill. Jayla Lopez, now a 12 Corners Middle Sixth, Middle School sixth grader and nominated by Lizzie Eden and Katie Drake, French Row teachers. Jayla, if you could come on up. Jayla Lopez, as I said, now a 12 Corners Middle School sixth grader. Mrs. Eden Rowe, Jayla is literally our shining light here at French Row. She is an incredibly hardworking and perseverant student who takes on any challenge she may face with a beaming smile on her face. We see that tonight. And a positive outlook. Mrs. Drake added, "Jayla brings joy, laughter, and a big smile to everyone she encounters. Her sincere love makes everyone feel special and included." Her classmate Anna said, "She literally knows and is friends with everybody." Erin Koch added, "She has certainly enhanced my life here at FRES and captured my heart these past three years. Jayla is the type of child who will touch people's lives wherever she goes and change them for the better. I speak from experience that I always felt welcome and embraced by a friend at French Row when I saw you and at the middle school now." Jayla, thank you for being a Brighton believer and congratulations. Lisa Hartman, nominated by FRES Counselor Ashley Ellis. Lisa and Ashley, if you could come up. Lisa Hartman, the district's Director of Human Resources, nominated by FRES Counselor Ashley Ellis. She wrote, "Lisa is one of the first contacts when being introduced to and working within the Brighton Central School District. She is kind, welcoming, super organized, and one of your initial experiences impressions of the district. Lisa provides a helpful process that is user-friendly and easy to navigate. She handles herself with great professionalism and integrity. We are so fortunate to have her here supporting us and representing the district. Thank you, Lisa, for your dedication and welcoming, helpful presence for those of us that work with you each and every day." We'd say nothing to contradict that. We would say in fact, it's even better than that, Ashley, because that is every single day, all day and everything that she does. Is such a kind and thoughtful colleague and coworker, incredibly sharp and great in what she does as well. Lisa, congratulations. I have embarrassed you. Adele Moskoviches, Council Rock Library Media Specialist and Principal Matt Tappan. Mr. Tappan wrote, "Adele is our amazing librarian at Council Rock Primary School. Although we are so excited for the new library, these last two years have been a challenge. The library had to move more than two times and a third time is planned for the spring or summer. Through it all, Ms. M. has been so positive, flexible, and innovative. She has collaborated with her TA to ensure kids get exactly what they need. She works hard to know each child and their interests to ensure that they get just the right book, a just right book. She embodies all of the Brighton belief traits and I'm so thankful for all of her hard work. Adele's vision for the library was pretty amazing. It has come to fruition. People are coming to visit it. It is an incredible space for kids, for families, for our staff. Thank you for that. Thank you for making such a special place. Congratulations." Gail Saki, also with Mr. Tappan, Principal Matt Tappan. Gail, if you could come on up. Gail Saki is a woman who makes things happen. Each and every day, she arrives at work ready to make the lives of our students better. She works hard to build strong relationships with kids and staff as they work to check out books. Through construction and COVID procedures, Mrs. Saki has been flexible and willing to do whatever it takes to provide kids with a great experience in the library. On top of all of this, she is a leader among her peers acting as a TA mentor. She helps all TAs find their way when starting at CRPS and encourages them to be their best. Gail is an amazing asset to our Council Rock community. My own children have experienced it down with Gail. Emma spoke fondly of you all of the time. So this is a very special one for us to begin tonight, for me personally too. So thank you again. As a dad, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Just a fantastic way to get a meeting started. However, we're going to do a great, great budget presentation here shortly, but I know that many of you have to be up in the morning to help kids get safely across the street, or to get kids in classes, or to get kids in the library. We'd love to have you stay, but also understand there are priorities. So if at this point you'd like to take a minute, just so you're prepared for work tomorrow, that's also okay. Not okay for the principals, but for all of you if you would like to do that. Thank you all again.
I'd like to start by detailing the town's contribution to the school district. It will go up 74% next year.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
I have an uncanny ability to clear the room, apparently. I have an uncanny ability to clear the room, apparently.
So after that great start, Dr. McGowan, we would love to hear more about the budget.
So what's interesting as we start that is that, you know, I made a comment to the board earlier in time we met about the important conversations we have in this room and others, and then the experience people have and the incredible things that are happening around us. And those awards, I think, are a great example of that. And the spending plan supports the work that is done that creates an environment where those things are happening and those kids are having that experience. So I'm really excited to talk about that tonight, especially when we're reminded so presently of the great work that's done and the people that are doing it and making that happen. First of all, in terms of budget information, that it's available, of course, at bcst.org/budget on the website. Revenue summary, summary of appropriation by function, appropriation by object, the budget detail by function, summary of staffing, the property tax report card, New York State School Report Card, the assessors' report, and the administrative compensation information. That's all on the website available to anybody and is, of course, very transparent and publicly disclosed. This is a very brief summary for the purposes of the budget hearing that happens statutorily each year. First of all, the information overall that you need to be aware of, of course, in the hearing format, is first the budget summary and how that budget breaks down and the property tax computation based on the revenues expected to be received. So our budget summary on the right-hand side, where is the money being devoted towards? Adjustment in salary and wages, 18%. Transportation, 21%. Special education, and these are the additional allocations for this year. Special education tuition and services, up 16%. Technology integration, cybersecurity, 11%. And then mandates and contractual obligations, up 34%. So again, adjusted from the adopted 21-22 to the 22-23 proposed. And on the left-hand side of your screen, the total preliminary budgeted amount, the proposed budget being $93.1 million, 93,153,759 to be exact for a hearing, that's a change of $5,467,711 or 6.24% increase. We would see a change in state and federal sources of 201,242, unrestricted foundation aid up $2,834,110, and the other local sources of 481,126. That largely consists of the sales tax received as well and some other smaller sources. But fund balance being used to reduce the levy, so the appropriated fund balance and reserves that will reduce the actual levy. This is people's dollars, tax dollars now that are used from reserve accounts to offset what would have to be increased in terms of the tax levy. We're utilizing $750,000 to do that as well. Non-property tax revenues up 4.2 total. Those all add up to 4.266,478 total or a change of 13.78%. The total real property tax, then, so what has to be levied to make up the difference between those other revenue sources and the other aids, local revenue sources, the property tax makes up that gap for the increase in spending, and that is compliant with the property tax cap or an increase of 2.12% or $1,201,233. Again, 2.12% in compliance with the property tax cap. The expenditure budget and where are the increases? Salaries and wages overall. So the spending overall in that category is up 6.7%. It's important to point out that that does not mean people's salaries are going up 6.7%. The spending in that area due to both contractual increases and additional positions that are budgeted for in the salary area, up 6.7%. Employee benefits then a corresponding increase of 3.7% spending in that area. BOCs up 8.6%. We mentioned a variety of student placements has a great deal to do with that increase in spending. Supplies and services up 10.8%. Debt and transfer actually down 2/10ths of a percent for a total increase of 6.2% in spending in the total amount of budgeted dollars. Really important to take a look at the three-part budget summary, and really, the interesting aspect to this bar chart is, one, as you're looking at those bars go up, that's the size of the total budget increasing the size of those bars over time. But the spending per category, so the budget is broken down into three areas, capital, administrative, and programming. Capital in blue, administrative in orange, and program in gray. I think it's really an important aspect of the budget to point out that our administrative budget is at 10% of the total budget. So in other words, to support the entire system, it's only 10%. The lion's share of spending in the budget, 77%, is on program, is on program for students. And we've been able to increase the amount spent on capital. We've talked a lot about that and increasing that debt service over the years to improve our facilities. We managed to get that to 13% at that point, now 22-23, 13%, which we know is very helpful in terms of being able to maintain and improve our facilities. The spending pressures versus growth, that comparison is one we've made throughout the budget process. Important to point out again, if you look at the total amount of revenue coming in versus the spending pressures and how we've had to make up for an initial budget gap of $1.8 million, so the money we knew would be coming in, foundation aid and tax levy at the cap number, versus the challenges in terms of spending. One, the gray bar all the way on the left-hand side in the bottom of your screen, the minimum wage adjustment of about $980,000, which we made during this year to keep staff, to pay a fair wage, and to be able to recruit staff in a labor market that is exceptionally challenging. Our contractual salary increases that are part of our negotiated agreements and anticipated agreements of just over $1 million, that's the regular movement of people from one year to the next in terms of an increase that happens. New positions of $528,000, health insurance increase of $615,000. Remember, we belong to a consortium that keeps that rate of increase as low as possible and far lower than the rate of increase in the community-rated plans. The BOCs placements of $775,000, those are new programs for students who require those programs, who require them new going into next year, either by moving into the district or needing a new program going into next year. And contractual transportation cost of $1.1 million, and we've explained multiple times, the labor cost, the fuel cost, and the inflation cost and how our contract transportation can roll over from year to year without going out to be rebid, thank goodness, because the bid environment based on fuel and labor would make it a nearly insurmountable increase, we believe, but can roll over based on the inflationary cost, based on the state law. That cost, though, this year, when we talk about the impact of inflation on our community, is a $1.1 million increase in addition to the need for additional bus runs. If you go back to the bar before, BOCs placements, that requires additional transportation as well. And finally, technology and cybersecurity increase of $350,000, an emerging concern for businesses, organizations across the board. This is not probably a very foreign to anybody since many people have also experienced identity theft issues and the challenges around our data being out there and what we need to do to protect that data. And of course, student and family data here in the district being a primary concern for us. The propositions also being offered are the capital project proposition, current reserve in our capital reserve, so the money that is set aside specific for capital improvements can't be used for anything else, put aside by the community and authorized by the community. Right now, we have a balance of $6.5 million. Our proposed project budget for this year, this is the regular, again, maintenance of our facilities, the things we ought to be doing, is $7.2 million. Financing sources for that. So how are we going to pay for it? Our proposal is to borrow $4.8 million and use 2.4 of that 6.5 that's in the capital reserve right now. Great news, the building aid for the project, $4.8 million. So in other words, we're using the reserve account to pay the local share, resulting in no new taxes for our community for this capital work. The $4.8 million will be borrowed and then paid back by the state in the form of the state aid that comes from these types of projects. So it offsets impact on local property taxes. Local share, again, being paid out of that reserve, not raising any tax for this. So the proposed project scope for this would be at French Road, replace the gym floor, new cooling tower, playgrounds which need to be replaced and are not accessible enough for our students, and sight lighting. At the middle school, boiler replacement, domestic hot water boiler replacement, HVAC controls. And at the high school, we need to replace our gym floor and bleachers. Again, they're due for replacement. Renovate and rehab the main gym. We'll maintain the same architectural style of the gym, but we do need to renovate and rehab the gym. It is tired. Roof replacement also has to happen, the odd lower roof, really all projects that have to happen to maintain our facilities and continue to work towards providing a space for our students and our staff that is commensurate with the educational experience that they both expect and are getting here in Brighton. Property tax report card, we also report out on the schedule of reserves as part of this hearing. Our capital reserve balance on March 31st was $6.5 million, and the estimated balance June 30th would be $4.7 million. So we've mentioned that our first proposition would request authorization from the community to withdraw $2.4 million plus the withdrawal for the land purchase that was authorized by our community earlier this year as well. Also from the capital, the capital technology specifically, the balance is $806,000. We would maintain that balance on June 30th, and that is used to fund future instructional purchases as well. The capital bus purchase reserve has a balance of $500,000. We would anticipate on June 30th it would also have a balance of $500,000, and we would want to maintain that balance to replace buses purchased in 1819. When we talk about buses in the school district, we do not purchase full-size buses as we have contract transportation, but smaller buses that have provided us a tremendous amount of flexibility for field trips, clubs, activities, athletic teams that are able to use those smaller buses. That has worked out very, very well. Unemployment reserve is a balance of $1.2 million. Our estimated balance would be $853,268 on June 30th, and that would be to pay current unbudgeted claims as well in unemployment. Insurance reserve, tech and CVA, the Child Victims Act reserves, we have $645,000 set aside in the tech and $3.9 million in the CVA. We would pay for unbudgeted replacement of instructional hardware devices and uninsured judgments and claims associated with the Child Victims Act. We expect the balance on June 30th to be $645,000 in the tech and $5 million in the Child Victims Act. In other words, we would then be putting money there at the end of this year, and the board will authorize that. The tax surcharge claim account, the tax surcharge reserve, $829,217 on March 31st. We would expect the balance to be $66217, and we'd pay for unbudgeted tax surcharge judgments. That's when people can come and claim that their tax should be lower. That's a legal process they go through, and we have a reserve account to cover those claims. Employee benefits, accrued liability, the EBLR reserve has a balance of $1.1 million. We would expect that balance to stay the same, exactly $1.11,113,021, to pay for the unbudgeted amount of contractual benefits for which the reserve was intended. And the retirement contribution reserves, both the ERS and TRS, the employee retirement system and the teacher retirement system, so this can be used to offset unbudgeted or budgeted additional expenses from those retirement accounts. The balance in the ERS is $5.1 million and the TRS is $1.7. We'd expect the balance to remain the same in the ERS reserve, $5,155,145, and to be $2,056,853 in the TRS reserves. And again, the budget appropriates $350,000 from the ERS reserve to offset the growth in personnel costs. Impact on tax rates, we've talked about equalization several times here before. The most efficient way to explain it is that there is a rate set by the state to equalize taxes between two different jurisdictions assessing values that are within the same school district boundaries. So in our community, we have Brighton residents, so their homes would be assessed by Brighton, and Pittsburgh residents assessed by Pittsburgh. And the state has analyzed that and said that in this current year, the assessments in Brighton are 95% essentially accurate to the full value, but in Pittsburgh, they are 91%. So there has to be a rate established that equalizes so that we're paying our fair share between the two towns, which means the rate per thousand for Brighton taxpayers has been $26.54 per thousand and for Pittsburgh, 27.72. Next year, if there's no increase in the levy or growth in the tax base, we don't find that out until August or so when you set the tax levy. Right now, the assumption is that the assessments in Brighton will be 89% and the Pittsburgh balances or assessments, 82%, which means the rate in Brighton would be 26.52 and the rate in Pittsburgh, 28.81, are up 3.9%. And that means on a home valued at $250,000, we'd be less $4 in Brighton and up $271 in Pittsburgh, again, based on equalization. So what is the impact, then, on rates next year with tax levy if it grows? Again, with the allowable limit, the 2.1% at the cap number, compliant with the cap and assuming, again, 89 and 82, we're looking at a rate of 27.09 for Brighton taxpayers and 29.42 for Pittsburgh, which would mean on a home valued at $250,000, the cap compliant tax increase would be $137 in Brighton and 4.23 for Pittsburgh taxpaying residents. The summary overall is a 6.2% increase again in spending, a tax cap compliant 2.12% increase to the levy, and it plans for the reduction of federal aids over the next two years. So COVID money that has come in, we've looked at establishing programs, hiring staff members, all within that salary amount that I mentioned, that increase, but we've planned that over time, we're able to manage to keep those programs without having to cut that, knowing that those revenues will drop off, those federal funds will drop off. So we're planning for a cliff and managing that, which was a priority in this budget as well. Also reflects our continued investment in our blueprint priorities. So we align our spending very strategically to the work that we are doing to improve outcomes each and every day, the strategic plan that's developed with community input each year. In academic rigor for all students, mental health and wellness, and our systems that are related diversity, equity, health and safety, innovation, and the development of alternative learning environments as well. It honors those commitments. And responds to mandated increases in spending and the continued investment we need to make in program while minimizing the increase in local property taxes. We believe it reflects what we value here in this community and continues to maintain a respectful approach to budgeting with our community, understanding the challenges that people have each and every day as well. Finally, the school budget and board candidate vote is, of course, next Tuesday, the 17th, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, right here in this building, in the small gym. People can park in the back and have easy access to the building. We've changed that now over the last couple of years, believing it's a better location. Like people to see the buzz of the high school and the great activity and interact with kids that way, but it is hard while they are approaching their work and a normal school day in a high school to have that at the same time. It's also hard for community members to be able to get in and out of the building efficiently, but the vote being here tends to help that quite a bit. So qualified residents of the district, if you have questions on that, you can certainly call Kim Landsafame here in our office to ask more about qualified resident, et cetera, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Kiwanis food trucks should be out back as well. So if you're looking to have dinner or a late snack or whatever it might be, come on by. Answer any questions for the board.
You talked about a couple of the sets of monies going into and out of the reserves. We should just mention that the Brookside sale is still in process and moving along. We don't have a final or closed date on that, but that money would go into the reserves once received, as you talked about in the past.
That is correct. That is correct. I just want to take a second, one, to thank you for your guidance and input throughout the process, number one, to our budget makers who really play a significant role in helping us think through, look for efficiencies and budget appropriately going into next year. But for Lou Alano and his financial stewardship of the district that continues to be so exceptional, allows us to continue the work we need to do for kids. Lou, thinking through how to do that, makes that happen, so we appreciate that. And Allison and Deanna contribute quite a bit to this process as well in their roles leading those houses of the organization. So thanks to all of you, much appreciated.
We sometimes joke that we talk about budgets all the time. Obviously, we've seen this presentation a number of times, but I do want to give any of you the opportunity to ask any more questions before we go. Again, we've talked about this at the last meeting and constantly, but, you know, one last chance. Good. Thank you very much.
I'd like to pause for a moment and have the principals dry their eye. They're very upset that they won't hear this presentation. I'm sorry.
In a few weeks, we start next year's budget, just, you know.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, as we talked about in the beginning, there's a lot going on, a lot happening, but we are finally at the opportunity for public participation. If anybody is interested in speaking, please, Dan Goldman, raise your hand as always. Let Dan know and come to the podium and identify yourself and provide us with feedback or questions. Seeing no one, we will move forward. Next up is approval of tonight's amended agenda that we all did receive. Any question on this agenda? Motion to approve as received?
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? Aye. Approval of the minutes from April 26th, we had received those in the past. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, or edits to those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Andrea.
Seconded.
Seconded by Julie. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up are the reports. We've got the treasurer's report and a number of financial reports, and we've had those and had the chance to go through them. We do need to push We do need to push those forward for approval unless you have any questions on those financial reports. Motion to approve the financial reports as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Susan? Seconded by Christine, all those in favor? Aye. I do not see Lila.
She's senior night tonight, her track meet, so she, I would like to.
So she prioritized not seeing the budget meeting to go run track.
She did not. I would like to tell all of you, this is important to note. She said, she actually emailed and said, "I will not go to a track on the senior night." Told her, "No, absolutely not, that would be a bad idea." But thank you for offering, so she's a very committed person.
Next up are the Board of Education reports. Obviously, we wish her well tonight and hope she has a great senior night. Next up are the Monroe County School Board reports. First, the, computer's going a little haywire, I'm sorry. There we go. First up is labor relations. I did attend that luncheon a couple of weeks ago, not surprisingly. It was all about healthcare, things that we're doing within the community pool to try to control costs, shrink costs. It's all the things we read about in the paper every day, having to do with pharmaceutical costs, pools, value plans, and things like that. I don't know that it's good news or bad news that everybody struggles with this and trying to find ways. And we're fortunate to be part of a consortium or a pool that helps keep our costs as low as possible, I think. So a lot of discussion there, a lot of people working on that. And, you know, as is the case with all benefit plans, it's important to all the employees. So good session, a lot of good discussion there. That was labor relations. Information exchange.
We had a meeting on April 13th, and the presenter was Linda Augustin, who's the executive director of the Systems Integration Project, which is an effort to update services that are available to component districts. And it was really interesting, I attended by Zoom, and it was a very interesting presentation.
That was information exchange, legislative.
We met last week on the 4th. It was our second very short meeting in a row. There's not, with the budget in play, there's not a lot of, there's just not a lot going on, nobody got the funding that they expected. We are working on legislative appointments with our federal legislators, Schumer, Gillibrand, and Joe Morelli, because it feels like there's, there are more things coming at us from the federal government than we've had in the past. And we may meet in June, but it's unlikely.
Great. I did receive from Mark Kokanovich, who's our representative to BOSI's, an update from their meeting at the end of April. There were a number of notes, and I'll just read through a couple of things that certainly I thought were interesting. Number one, the Monroe One BOSI's Board recently approved new starting rates for hires in transportation, food service, and building grounds units to be more competitive in the marketplace and aid in hiring, similar to the challenges we faced and took actions on, I think, a month or so ago, and continuing to be a story in terms of trying to retain those folks and make sure the kids are taken care of. Also, the board approved, BOSI's Board approved the temporary suspension for the upcoming program year of the Adult Literacy Program due to declining enrollment and inadequate New York State funding. Also noted, Mark also noted that 10 Monroe One BOSI students placed the New York State Finals of the Skills USA Competition in Syracuse, including a first-place finish by Brighton senior Carter Derhock, and I think I'm saying that correctly, in the culinary arts competition. So that's great. And finally, there, April 28th board meeting, they did receive a detailed presentation from Felicia Smith, updating the board on the urban suburban program. So as is the case everywhere, a lot also going on for BOSI's. Other board member reports.
I participated in the special education curriculum review last week, and we're working on a survey for families as well as for faculty. And we will probably, we will not, plan not to present to the board until the fall.
I'll just mention briefly just about the interview that some local board members were asked to do with the Act for Education group around election time and school budget time. This not-for-profit group wanted to put together some sort of public service announcements and information about the importance of school boards and what they do for all our communities. And so I participated in that, and there were three other districts represented, both East Side and West Side, and that should be coming out on social media. And again, it's just a positivity campaign about the good work that's going on in all our schools across all of Monroe County. So it was very positive.
Great, thank you. Karen?
I attended the environmental committee meeting yesterday. It's a resurrection of this particular committee. COVID halted our work, but that's not to say that work wasn't happening in the district. So we met with Bruce Knapp from ME Engineering. We had community members there, we had some of our architects there, some staff, and he walked us through the improvements and upgrades to the HVAC system, specifically at Council Rock, with a focus on its upgraded efficiency. I know now more about dedicated outdoor air systems than I did when I started, but it's, it's actually really super cool. It's, it's interesting to see, you know, it's abstract when you talk about spending the money, but then seeing how this has improved the building, the experience for students and teachers. And I really enjoyed the presentation, and I think it was meaningful to our community members to see that we had made strides in this area when it comes to efficiency.
Thank you.
The, the New York State School Board Association DEI Committee has not met since I last reported, so they're just working on the module that will be created for all new and any board members who want to take professional learning in DEI. And then today, the science program evaluation group met for the last time, and they'll be reporting out to the board in two weeks, the science evaluation and the math program evaluation at our next meeting.
Thank you. I'll just quickly note with regards to some of the capital projects ongoing and in the future, the trades and the buildings market continue to be chaotic. We get prices back that are astonishing sometimes and not astonishing in a good way because of the cost of materials, because of delays, because of the availability of labor. And I'll give Lou and the facilities team, and I know I give them a shout out a lot, in terms of how you value engineer and take a look at things so that we can stay in line with our budgets and still get the work done. So we've had some construction meetings. We've got another one tomorrow to take a relook at some things that came in just higher than we expected. There's a ton of fiscal discipline that takes place, and I just, excuse me, appreciate the efforts of the team saying, "We're not going to exceed a budget, and we're going to find a way to get the work done" and not short shrift anything, we're going to do it correctly. So I was in this industry for a while. The prices that are coming through and the availability of stuff is just astonishing. It just, it's unbelievable. So shout out Lou to the buildings team that you're working with and some of the work we're getting done there. BTA report, ton of stuff going on as always, Nicole?
Oh my goodness, so I kind of put out this big ask to all the buildings. You know, I really, this is an opportunity to share, and I think I got close to 50 submissions, which has never happened. So I thought, well, how am I going to do 50 submissions and not make you want to cry at the end? So I tried to make it a little bit more wow, you know, a little bit more interesting to look at. So I'll just hit some of those highlights. It ended up being 22 pages as it is, which is just outrageous, but that just tells you how much is going on in our schools.
Visually, though, it was great.
It was great, good. It was like, I want to wake everyone up. So we'll start at Council Rock, and you can see we have this awesome set of chapter books with diverse characters that we are using in second grade that was provided through a grant. They're, they're just wonderful titles, wonderful books. I love the video of Ms. Cohen's kindergarten class playing an addition game with EM4, so hopefully you were able to click on all those links and they worked. In Mrs. Buchi's kindergarten class, each month they do a self-portrait of themselves, which is just a wonderful way to, to look back at their whole year, to see what they started with and where they are now. In Ms. Fossa's 1214 class, they made a beautiful mosaic with dyed pasta and clay, and as part of their plant unit, they created a flower that had the different parts of the plant. And again, I'm so grateful for all the photographs that the teachers submit because I think it really gives you a great glimpse into the classrooms. Kindergarten students in Mrs. Kennyworth and Mrs. Glanville, they actually, for the end of their weather unit, they swapped classrooms and swapped teachers, which they, it was a tremendous amount of fun. But what they were able to do was show what they learned in their weather unit. So you can see those big smiles there. In Fizz Ed, you have two PDFs that Mrs. Cooper put together on karate and bike safety that they do every year, which is wonderful. So that's the link up in the corner. And then in Mrs. Banbury's second grade class, they had someone from Keisha Dutton, who is the parent of a student in Mrs. Banbury's class, and she's at Cornell Cooperative. She came and did a presentation on recycling, gardening, but brought in worms, which was a lot of fun. And again, you see some nice wigglers there. In library, we did have the author visit this past Friday of Jourdain Nolan, which was just amazing. There were wonderful art projects. And one of the great things that happened today, which I'm probably taking away from Matt's presentation, and he does his, but we had a book birthday today. So she released a new book today called Leila, The Last Black Unicorn, and we all, the whole school got unicorn hats and kazoo's, and we had a birthday and were able to read the story, so that was just magical. Again, for Mrs. Buchi, she did an author study of Mo Willems. So you can see they looked at Nuffle Bunny, Elephant and Piggy, and Don't Let the Pigeon books, and created their own responses. And kind of in the corner, I don't know if you saw it, in Mrs. Ackerman's class, they were learning about Jack Polacksky, the poet, and they read Bleeser's Ice Cream, which is a poem where you come up with all these really fantastical ice cream types. So they had Carrot Coral Candy Crunch, and they made a giant mural of that. Last, I think this is last, Council Rock, yep. In extended studies, kindergartners used Vincent Van Gogh to work on their habits of mind. So they created and imagined with Starry Night. First graders worked together to become Pluck from Midsummer Night's Dream and scare the craftsman. And you can see there's a student using a quill to draw his with. And second graders became architects. They learned about Frank Lloyd Wright and made their own toothpick and marshmallow structures and talked about, we had this wonderful, you know, taking your 2D and moving it into 3D. And one of the things Mrs. Yaman talked about was those shapes that they're learning in kindergarten are the basics to architecture. So it was, it was a really neat experience, and they did not eat them. She did give them some to eat, but the ones that they felt that they did not eat. So we moved to Front Road. They have this wonderful program called the Passion Project Seminar where small groups of students in grades 3 to 5, they come once a cycle and they really work on a project that they are interested in. There's three links over on the left of some different projects that students came up with, and then you can see different students presenting, and they shared it out. They have three 10-week opportunities during the school year, so it's a great program. Lots of music happening. Fresz Red Band and Blue Band had a field trip to TCMS, where they played with the 7th and 8th grade bands. So they played a piece for each other, and then they combined to play a piece together. And what was great was the middle schoolers were able to talk to the 5th graders about what it will be like when they get to 12 Corners. The Fresz also played just last week at the Red Wings game, and then they have spring concerts, solo fest, and the Meadow Brook Parade coming up. Fresz 4th and 5th Grade Chorus, so I love this back and forth between the different buildings. What a, what a great connection. The High School Choir came to French Road for a performance, and then 4th and 5th Grade Chorus was able to attend. This is amazing, and I hope you were able to check out some of the books in Book Creator. Katie Fallon did a unit on changemakers and connected it with Black History Month, and then the biography unit. So they talked about how changemakers are people who identify a cause and take action. They use T-Read Alouts to help provoke thinking. And then they came up with a way to, well, they brainstormed many ways to help the community, picked one, and then put it into action. They also researched changemakers and then made a biographical presentation of the one that they picked, and that's the link. So hopefully you can check that out if you haven't already. It was pretty amazing. Also, this is from Rosemary Holfith. They are using mindfulness meditation to think about their learning, test-taking, and then social challenges. They use Susan Verdis' books, which are the I Am Human, I Am One, I Am Peace. If you, there's a photograph of them at the top. She was the author that Janice Mix was able to have do the author visit. When they don't use the books, they use the Brighton Wellness Suite, which is such a wonderful resource. They use mindful music, mindful video, and she uses it to help them do all sorts of experiences, whether it's a challenging lesson or if they have to do group work, which I kind of filed that in my mind to take back to my classroom. With Mrs. Willis, they had two guest lessons from, also from Cornell Cooperative. They talked about soil, made a compost in a bag experiment, talked about how composting can help with landfills, healthy soil, and they also learned about the benefit of worms. And they have their own set of worms also, and they're using it to make soil for the garden at school. And also at Fresz, with Mrs. Holfith also, she presents a lesson that lasts from February to the end of April, all about the Iditarod, and she ties it into many things, geography, mapping, weather, community, dogs as athletes, the different resources. They actually write letters to mushers. I hope I said that right, mushers. And they were able to virtually meet with two of them this year and follow them along the race, which was really great. And they had lots of adventures. There was an adventure where six of the mushers had to be rescued, so they had a big dialogue about whether or not they should do that. And then she has some amazing photographs of letters, the notebooks, and the students working. They also tied their habits of mind into what the mushers might need and decided all the, that the mushers needed to use all 16 habits of mind. We'll move to the middle school. Andrea Doyle is collaborating with Math 8 to address COVID gaps in learning and an upcoming unit that they have. And they created a lesson to link concrete to abstract and had students think of multiple ways that they could show their thinking. So you can see some examples down at the bottom. Mrs. Kugel's 8th grade ELA classes worked with Katie Lambert. They researched a local Holocaust survivor using the Jewish Federation. They identified and aligned their stories and then matched it up with the journey that they would have taken. They created a profile in Courage honoring their survivor's journey. They shared it, and then they had a discussion to compare how journeys were similar and found out that some people were at the same places at the same time. And they used this before their study of Night by Ali Weasel. And then they have the link there, so hopefully you are able to check their link. That was a beautiful presentation. And we have a new therapy dog at 12 Corners. I love all of these golden doodles. So Murphy is the new therapy dog. He visited 6th, 7th, and 8th grade math classrooms, great place to start, and he'll keep coming back. If we move over to the right, you can see Mrs. Walter. She had students research and create posters about the different states in Germany and made a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation that includes the Cress, their economic importance, weather, food, famous people, so on. And then students have been working on identifying Brighton beliefs characteristics when they're put into practice at TCMS. put into practice at TCMS. So, again, there's the link down there that you can click on. Last page at 12 Corners. Mrs. Cantz has a fabulous PowerPoint about Greek architecture as part of social studies. And then Laura Lu, she had students create a story weave. So, they took their vocabulary words and then shared a sentence. They took turns going back and forth and came up with very funny stories, but also practiced some of their vocabulary. And April 30th, April 30th was the Best Buddies Sixth Annual Friendship Walk. We had two students represent Brighton, and they had a great time participating, and you can see the big smiles they have in those photos. And the high school. What's interesting is that there's, we're photograph-heavy at the primary level, and then we get very text-heavy when we get to the high school. So, in the economics class, this is from Andrew Conroy, a Syracuse University professor emeritus actually came to meet with students. He conducted a seminar. Students got to ask questions about economics, controversial issues, college life, future academics study, and they really enjoyed it. And Mr. Wilson in 12th grade Law and Government had the Shinshanim actually come, and they talked about similarities and differences between Israeli citizenship and US citizenship. And then he said Dr. Hall and some of the other administrators have made time to also talk about different roles, but they had Dr. Hall in, will be having Dr. Hall in, I don't know if he's been in yet, to talk about how he balances his different constituencies, parents, students, faculty, and it gives students the opportunity to actually advocate for themselves. They, Dr. Hall has been able to come in on three different classes on the same day as have others, and that's been great. He really wanted to make sure that we did a shout out, that the Dr. McGowan, Dr. Hall, Mr. Merritt, Mr. Davis, how much they appreciate your responses back to the kids. So, that was very appreciated. The counseling department, I will not read all of this. There is a lot going on in the counseling department, so I'll let you check that out. But they are really moving and shaking for all grade levels. It's just extraordinary. Really, even having the summer piece, the summer, so they're having a summer, senior summer boot camp for, how do you say, moving up, the moving up?
Rising.
Rising. Thank you. The rising seniors. And we're getting there. Business Ed, they're doing the Stock Market Game Challenge. They had four teams ranked in the top 100 of the Northeast Region, one currently ranked at fourth. And again, the counseling groups are trying to, have started up their small groups, their small counseling groups again. They, let me see, they just had Senior Decision Day last week, where they did their I Decided posters. We'll go to the German exam. Many, many students took the German exam, but this was pretty exciting. Two students won a scholarship, which is study, and they accepted for study for a trip to Germany. They were among 58 selected from the US to receive an all-expense-paid summer trip to Germany. What was also great was that this is the first time that two students have won in the same year. And then she also listed all the students who achieved a Level Two, Level Three, Level Four. So, really remarkable. I think there were 58. Oh, no, I'm sorry. There were too many numbers. Yes, too many numbers. Two more pages. The students, photo 10, students photography was selected to be at a gallery show at Image City Photography. It's called Through the Student Lens. The students that were selected are listed there, and then they had one student, Karma Spaker, who won Best in Show for her piece. And Ms. Pickering just wanted to say how proud she was, and that these will be part of the district art show tomorrow. Last page.
One of those pieces was hanging here for a while.
Yes, I believe it was hers, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Wasn't that?
With the sunglasses.
Yeah. And in music, this is really cool. Some of the band seniors are learning a secondary instrument. So, they're teaching each other how to play a different instrument, so a new to them. They're gaining, the ones teaching are gaining performance skills, learning how to scaffold instruction, anticipate errors, and developing patience. They're going to have a beginning band performance at the end of the semester. And then, of course, we have Allstate, Area Allstate, preceded by Solafest. And Global Studies 10 is starting a human rights violation project in May. They're going to meet virtually with grandchildren of Holocaust survivors. This is part of the 3GNY organization. They will hear a presentation from Howard Ennis on propaganda and how to, how to look for reliable sources. And then they will create PowerPoints based on what they learn and present them with their classmates. And that.
I'd like a drink.
Oh, my goodness. So, yes. So, if you ask, if you ask, the Brighton faculty will deliver. That was.
That's great.
You're welcome.
Peter?
Okay, the PTSA Board Report. It is not 22 pages long.
No, it's still very robust.
PTSA is working on the end-of-year celebrations and events. The PTSA has hosted the PTSA Lifetime Membership Awards on May 4th. We are hosting a meeting for Meet the Candidate Night, May 11th at 7:00 PM in the Brighton Central Office Boardroom. Also, the event will be broadcast online. Voting is May 17th at the Central Office Building. The vote will be on the budget and board candidates. We encourage all community members to come vote and make their voices heard. We are celebrating graduating seniors once again by helping administrators post signs in lawns in late May. And elections for next year's PTSA Board will be on May 18th. Include the slate, remind people they need to be members to vote. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Dr. McGowan, Superintendent's Report.
Vote Tuesday, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Look forward to seeing everybody there. Nothing else to add.
Great. Some business items now here. Approval of a non-resident tuition contract, replacement of a special education student, a program offered by Livonia. Questions in regards to this contract. Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Andrea. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of revised corrective action plans. These are the plans. We do an independent audit. Christina and Karen are on the audit committee, obviously. And we get corrective actions based on an independent external auditor and any areas where we think we can improve our practices and continue tight fiscal controls. We take what are called corrective actions, and that's what this is, this particular item is about. Christina, Karen, anything else you want to add to that?
No.
Motion to approve the revised corrective action plans.
Still moved?
Moved by Susan, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, item 11, approval of a district-based lease with Monroe One BOSI's. We have classroom space here at Central Office that we lease to BOSI's. Have had a chance to look at that lease. Any questions in regards to that lease? Motion to approve the lease as presented?
Still moved.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Juline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 12, approval of election workers. There's an election on May 17th, as well as a budget vote.
And food trucks.
And food trucks. Thank you. We're not voting for those. Those are just going to be here. But the approval of election workers for that event, and we have that listing here, but motion to approve the election workers as presented.
Still moved?
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Christine. All those in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda, item 13, which includes the report of personnel changes, which we've had the chance to review, recommendations from the Committee on Special Education and preschool special education, also includes fundraising activities for Brighton field hockey, Brighton cheerleading, and the Class of 2022 Student Council, opportunities to have some ice cream and get your car washed coming up for you. I also want to highlight, as we do, a gift from the Allstate Foundation, an amount of $1,000 to the Brighton Central School District Softball Program, which is very nice. And finally, letter F, the field trip approval. All of us have either had kids or will have kids go on these trips to New York City, Vermont, or Quebec. Any questions with regards to any of the items on the consent agenda?
Question.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Still moved.
Moved by Juline?
Second.
Seconded by Andrea. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else you would like to add?
Just want to clarify, Peter, tomorrow night, 6:30 or 7?
I believe it's 7.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, item 14, motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.